I call to me to order, please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson here, Mrs. Moore here, Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Bitner.
Here.
Ms. Wong here, Mr. Lunder.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of council July twenty third, twenty twenty four. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Any major spelling correction for the word centennial? Other than that?
Motion for passage.
Motion made by Mrs. Moore, second by Mr. Bitner for passage. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson, hi. Mrs. Moore, hi. Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bitner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Correspondence clerk, do we have any correspondence this evening?
I do not.
Does any member of council have correspondence this evening?
I do. Um, this is still way too. Let me find mine. So on Tuesday, August sixth. Lake County was hit by a major storm that left many without power. Menorah Lake being the biggest one with a not over ninety percent lossage. A couple of members were canceled, were contacted by Meyer located in Manner. On August eleventh, they asked how they could help us and our community. Council members tossed around multiple ideas on what we could do with this offer to help our residents. On Monday, August twelfth, power was restored to all of our residents. Our plans had a big change of what we could do for our residents. I reached out to Vanessa Meyer, my new BFF. At nine AM saying, we would like to take them up on this offer of perishable food for our community. She simply said, let me know what you're looking for quantities. And we'll see what we can do. We were, to say the least, shocked of this generous offer. I was already scheduled off from vacation for my full-time work and knew most of my council colleagues were at work. I reached out to Council Ward to Ms. Wong for assistance. We set up a city hall to make a plan, a plan that was bigger than we ever thought, with no experience in planning disaster relief. We compiled their list, we sent it off to Meyer hoping for the best. After multiple calls, texts, emails, by six PM Monday night, we were set for food distribution on Tuesday, August thirteenth. At six fifty AM on Tuesday morning, I received a call from Jim Teraski saying, you have a truck sitting up here at City Hall. With a quick action from Jim and the service department, they were able to borrow a pallet check from Villal- Villalone's towing and get the truck ready for distribution. We had many volunteers that helped us portion out the food, bag the food. We also had another crew in the reefer refrigeration truck doing the same things, things with meat, eggs, and milk. After our first distribution slot, we had visitors from the city of Seven Hills come out to visit us as they were hit by the tornadoes. Tony Terry, Director of Senior and Community Services, and Debbie wanted to know how we did it in such a short amount of time. I sat down with them and explained our process and the way we changed things and made things change along the way. They saved for our second time slot to get the feel of our operation and to help us out. We served over five hundred plus or minus residents with much-needed perishable goods from the generosity of Meyer. The city of Seven Hills held their food distribution on Friday, August sixteenth. I was able to go out and help them get organized for their distribution as well. That same week, on Saturday, August seventeenth, we had a big, very heavy downpour. We had about three inches of rain in about forty-five minutes. With this much rain all at one time, it was impossible for our stormwater sewers to keep up. Calls were made to dispatch to help with dishes, ditches, and draining. The service department was in full swing doing the best they could do with these conditions. The service department was back at it on Sunday morning. I did check, I did catch up with Jim Teraski. And they did say that the water stream sewer drain had receded about a foot and a half in thirty minutes. Everything was operating as it should. And I, there was some comments being posted on social media about different solutions and recommendations to solve our problems for water. On social media during our rainstorm, a post was made about an ordinance being, about an ordinance that should be looked at from our residents. I posted a response saying to our residents, here's a view of that copy of the ordinance so everyone has it. A comment was made, maybe we should be more accurate. Maybe you should be more accurate with our residents. We should be posting the complete ordinance with. If we should be more accurate, we should be providing the complete ordinance with sub ordinance when we are explaining things to our residents, not just one ordinance. I feel as council representatives, we should be respectful towards each other and not give the impression that we do not work well together when we do. Thank you.
Any other correspondence this evening? Hearing none. We should each have received the resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash twenty-nine. Uh, is there a motion to amend the resolution to add that immediately after correspondence?
Second.
Motion made by, motion made by Mrs. Thompson, second by Ms. Wong. Sorry, having a brain freeze there. To amend the agenda to add resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash twenty-nine. Immediately after correspondence. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bitner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. My resolution number twenty twenty four dash R dash twenty-nine, I will read it by its title and in its entirety. A resolution expressing sincere gratitude to my, to Meyer. Uh, whereas on August sixth, twenty twenty-four, Northeast Ohio was struck by storms causing widespread power outages. And whereas Menorah Lake was particularly hard-hit without full restoration of power until August eleventh, resulting in many residents losing significant perishable food. And whereas Mayor graciously offered assistance to our community and whereas Meyer provided a refrigerator truck full of milk, beef, chicken, produce, and eggs. And whereas hundreds of Menorah Lake families were able to receive much-needed perishables. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Menorah Lake, county of Lake, and state of Ohio, that this council on its own behalf, on behalf of the administration and citizens of the city of Menorah Lake, would like to express to Mayor the, our sincere thanks and gratitude for the extremely generous support to the residents of the city of Menorah Lake. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend.
Made by Mrs. Thompson, second by Mrs. Moore. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bitner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, second by Ms. Wong. Roll call, please.
Miss, uh, Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bitner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. So we would like to thank you for all your help with getting this done because it was just an amazing job. Uh, and especially on these two ladies' parts as well for really organizing this and working with you to, you know, make this happen because it really, it affected so many residents in our city that were really hard-hit by this. And so we, we just, we wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And now we'll turn over the administration.
Sir Johnson, members of council, public here this evening. But that's if you want to come up by the. The office of the mayor, city of Menorah Lake proclamation, and recognition of Myers for their generous donation of food to our Menorah Lake residents. Whereas Myers, the Michigan as the location headquarters, and our local members in acting two hundred men are at. Myers director of Melissa Conley and assistant store manager Vanessa Juckus. And Myers graciously donated enough food to feed the community of Menorah Lake, providing relief to over four hundred thirty-five households after suffering through the citywide power outage for several days due to tornado storm. The city of Menorah Lake wishes to recognize the director and assistant manager of Myers on this notable act of generosity and extend them our sincere gratitude. Now I therefore beg your pardon, the mayor of the city of Menorah Lake, along with the city council and our citizens, publicly go on record recognizing the exceptional kindness of Myers and extends to his others and our health, our health and appreciation.
I've never seen it organized by at least two classes. And what I did that day, I was very, very shocked. Personally, Monday morning, I said, okay, let's go. Guys, awesome, awesome, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Start off with a couple of thank cards. Uh, this was from Lisa Brandt at seventy-seven thirty-five Polley. Thanking to all who were involved in the boost this year, which means we actually, it was great to see a community coming together to help others. Sincerely, Lisa Brandt. Another one is toward the Jupiter Wits at seventy-five oh-one Dow and Drive. Many thanks to Menorah Lake City Hall and Meyer Foods for distributing free food for the Menorah Lake residents that lost power from last week's storm. I am ever so grateful to not eat Jupiter's, uh, Dow and Drive. I did put a new marriage report on the website, uh, just real little bit, uh, really this summer of twenty twenty-four is a lot like the summer of twenty twenty-three. We had a storm come through, we lost power. I can't stress enough that anytime we have a power outage, uh, the police have our residents for post all the time. All first energy at the one eight 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 lights, lights we're passing on here to report your loss of power. One thing that, you know, when, when some, we see our neighbors' power go out and hopefully they reported and ours reported, but yes, you know, as far as calling dispatch here, it, it does not. And, you know, they, they were overwhelmed, but of course, they're telling people to use this, this number. Uh, the number again is first energy and accurate hours of the number is customary to part of the power in the city. Again, by reporting the outage, first energy will provide the update on whether the spec of power distribution. Now originally, they said August fourteenth. We know that it, it wasn't August fourteenth. And I, I was getting updates at least twice a day from my ceiling before she went, uh, she went overseas to the building. And then I had other content to video. The updates from Wendy, uh, were good, but they, they weren't, okay, I can tell you that, uh, you know, September eleventh by six o'clock, you have that power. And that was nothing I was going to report to council because if it didn't happen, then people would be upset. But by by reporting it, at least I personally reported mine. I got a call back once the power was back on, first energy saying, if you don't have power, we think you do. If you don't, lose calls. So it's things like that, that to get a call back, it is good. Again, I want to thank fire for the donation, also Vice President Thompson and Councilperson Wong organized all this in a short period of time. And all the volunteers who helped to make this possible. Whenever this happens, we have generators here. Community room is always open twenty-four, seven days a week. So we have the generators running. People were texting me, uh, calling, emailing, you know, can we come in? Yes, come in. We have air conditioning, we have power. If you want to charge anything, please come in and do that. I can't think of enough of our fire release departments, our service department and our administration for working together to take care of our residents. I'm always proud of, of everything they do every day, but this with extreme situations, uh, you know, this, this was really a good job. I, I, I can't think of these guys here. I want to go to, uh, Tim Landet sent, uh, all of us on August twelfth, uh, an update, uh, city engineers report. The TC construction is done with the concrete, uh, large wooden share. Uh, right now, uh, Phillips paving is working on, uh, Granada. Uh, they were, they were start yesterday. Or not it yesterday, uh, thunderbird today and then sunset. Uh, it looks like for the asphalt these areas, there could be delays up to the next three weeks. And another thing with Tim's report, uh, was, uh, we were informed by, uh, OTWC, which is the Ohio Public Works Commission, that we're in line for funding, uh, for the beach drive storm out of the awful repair. This, uh, beach drive is Salida has been a problem for many years, uh, and it really is a key to further drainage in the city now by Salida. Uh, this would be, uh, about a two hundred thousand dollar grant and about a hundred fifty thousand, uh, zero interest loan uh, toward the project, which right now is about five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh, this is, uh, going to repair the five-foot storm sewer that washed out. Uh, the location is north of seventy-six sixty-one Salida. And drains and extension watershed along beach drives to the south. Uh, the funds for this will be available, uh, July first of twenty twenty-five. Uh, even though we're in line, it doesn't guarantee anything, but according to, yeah, there's a good chance it will be funded for this. So I just want to share that again, too. Uh, another thing. Uh, Thursday, September twelfth at seven o'clock, uh, we'll have our first envisioned comprehensive plan steering committee meeting. And, uh, Mrs. Thompson is going to be our council rep there. Uh, others, we have twelve people that are going to be involved. Uh, Cecilia Doer, uh, who was part of our, uh, our tyranny, any to, to choose, uh, contractor, uh, Ryan Findek, uh, Ryan Elspelkins, uh, he'll be part of that. Uh, Andrea Johnston, uh, Michael Kane, uh, Andy Rose, uh, Lisa Savoka, uh, Lisa is very active in the Lego entry PTA. Uh, Jeff Schick, uh, Susan Schick, Jeff Snow, uh, our zoning dispatcher, Chuck Snyder is going to be involved. Uh, Joe Solins, uh, Joe is part of Jennifer Company, and also Dave Robleski, uh, so those are the twelve. If you have a first meeting, it's September twelfth at seven o'clock for that. The, uh, fire department for July. Uh, there were a hundred twenty assists and calls for service, forty fire service calls, eighty-six rescue calls, seven calls for anyone who assists. There were no calls for required Narcan. Uh, department drills, uh, for EMS abdominal trauma, uh, fire was, uh, pump operator, uh, they did hydrant hookups and pump operations. Uh, there was also an annual maintenance of the department's ground landers and SBA, S CPAs. Uh, the, the department in July also oversees the, uh, their Harvey Yacht Club Fireworks. They did especially at Andrew's Place, uh, the Menor Yacht Club Fireworks, and also Andrew's Place, Place for, uh, full station maintenance. Mentioning Andrew's Place. The, the guys were when they're doing power outage and, uh, they recognized that the emergency lights were not working. So we, we have contacted their management to get those lights working again. We, I was here probably that Wednesday to follow it out. We had people walking downstairs with oxygen tanks and that, that's, uh, you can't have that. So we're going to get them to fix that. Service anniversary since July. Italian Chief Unisq, thirty-three years, Chief Pachasco, twenty-six years, Captain Cam Payne, fourteen years, firefighter Baker, one year. In, uh, during our July meeting, uh, Mr. Mr. Walker had mentioned fireworks and, you know, we talked about fireworks. I had Chief Forsythe pull, uh, the records for that holiday, you know, this probably about four days that people were celebrating Fourth of July. Uh, dispatch had twenty-eight fireworks complaints. Uh, eleven people were given warnings and one person was arrested for disorderly conduct. Uh, the warnings I S and C, these are also reported in the police records. And, uh, the next offense, the citation is issued after they got a warning. Uh, Kenny Ice, I, I did copy to everybody at the council today. Uh, we have fall festival yard signs in the office if you'd like one for the yard. Uh, we're still looking for volunteers to help with the fall festival. Uh, Saturday, September seventh, uh, if you're interested, please contact Kenny. Uh, we also have an opening on the park's recreation board if you know of anybody that's interested. And so please fire department.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lyons, good evening. Go.
I have a Ms. Park report.
Oh, okay. Sure. No, go right ahead.
Okay, uh. The preliminary damage assessment has been sent to the state for review. You know, that's through the Bay of Troy and, you know, where we had EMI stuff, uh, we estimated uh, twenty-four thousand dollars in public damages. Uh, we did not get any qualified individual damage reported to the city. Two businesses and one resident contacted us in total regarding individual assessments. Resolution R twenty-seven regarding surplus sales is simply an annual renewal. Common items to fall under the sale would be large equipment or city vehicles. This year's awareness pertaining to grass cutting, uh, old sixteen has left property listed in various years past. The housing zoning administrator has done an excellent job at finding the actual owners of the property and convincing them to be accountable for keeping up their own property. It's also done well with following up on invoices and receiving payments. That's Chuck Snyder. Uh, please consider adopting resolution R twenty-eight this evening and in lieu on August thirtieth. Uh, I submitted the grant on August fifteenth and is rewarded to receive up to fifty-five thousand dollars for a total of feature product improvements. I'll add to that, uh, this is an OBR that Chief Forsythe and Jacqueline worked on at the same time. And as you're saying here, it could, you know, get us another fifty-five thousand dollars for part. Uh, I'd also like to ask council table an in-depth discussion of the retired rehired ordinance. OBT pertaining to vacation until the second reading. Uh, the short version is the original version said six weeks, uh, because it was meant to be either or. They could pay out very over the vacation with six weeks being the max. The purpose is to avoid some issues that may occur if we allow partial payments. Uh, Jacqueline's saying, I'd like to apologize for not being able to discuss all this information in person. My absence was unavoidable as this was my daughter's scheduled week to live in New York College dorm located in New York. I look forward to seeing everyone next council. That's it.
Sure. Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lyons, now it's your turn.
Thank you. The only thing I even want to mention is that the charter review ordinance were forwarded to the board of election, received them, they reviewed them, uh, and they sent out the ballot language. Go on and ballot name. Same language that we had, you know, so. People go to polls and expect in October and we'll see all of those charter amendments out. Oh, now what do they want? I got a council would like to know it's ready. That's all I have here.
All right. Thank you. Questions for the administration? I'll go. This is for Mr. Lyons. All right, so. Yeah. But it's air-conditioned in here, so you're okay. All right. One of my requests for the administration had been for point-of-sale inspections to ask the residents when we're being, when their property is being sold about the number of bathrooms, the number of bedrooms. And apparently you've indicated that this would open us up to civil action and I want to understand that because it's a bit frustrating when people are getting their appraisals. And a property next door to them is appraised less because the auditor doesn't have the correct information. And we have no mechanism as a city to ensure that people are being taxed equitably.
Am I ready to go?
You go right ahead.
I did have a conversation with Chuck. I originally said, yeah. You said, yeah, okay. Then I called him back after thinking about it. And I said, that is really not a function of the city. Requiring somebody to answer a questionnaire from the city that you're giving official information to. Uh, somebody lies in it or, or puts down some inaccurate information that somebody could get mad at them and want them to be prosecuted. And I thought that that was outside of the functions of the city. I also talked to representative to when I was over at the auditor's office and other business. All the appraisal department. And I said, there are many times that administration, council people, you know, usually through the real estate listings, become aware of of information. You know, it shows something different in the yard at the time. And I was told and came back to the administration that the auditor's office is open to any of that kind of information uh, in order to, uh, know, you know, what they'll do with it, whether or not they'll actually look at it or not, I don't know. I mean, that's their function to make sure that everybody's tax technically. And I didn't think it was our function. I thought that we were putting, by opinion, residents, yourself in our own way for a function that is really not part of the inspection process. How many factors they have is not part of our inspection process. So that was my rationale. Not.
But the levying of taxes is our responsibility. And so.
Levying of taxes against the assessed value is our responsibility. The fairness of that taxing process is not our responsibility and is solely with the Lake County Audit. Their appraisal process began, you know, through, you know, probably the Lake County prosecutor. And because if they find that people have misrepresented things to them, then they can go ahead and take leave of action. Yes, well within their spirit. Now, I've never heard of anybody doing that, getting over at that level, but that's their area that are. Now, if council wants to make that an ordinance, then people have to fill that out. And if people don't fill that out, are we going to deny them, right, to sell the property? Or, you know, if they don't fill it out or they fill it out incorrectly, are we going to prosecute them? I mean, it opens up a whole area that that really isn't part of the functions of a city government. And that's the reason I told Chuck that and that got back to the committee and and now it's getting back to me in this August. But that was my.
I mean, the, the issue is that we, a lot of things get updated with the auditor because people get the permits for getting it done, an additional bathroom added on. So what we really say is those people who follow the law and do what they're supposed to do, bend over, grab your ankles because you're about to get screwed because your taxes are going to go up while the people who skirt the law manage to have lower taxes.
Let's go back to the skirting. Uh, that's a different issue to skirt. So the people that are in that house, you know, aren't necessarily skirted. They, they have bought the house that reflected, you know, on the auditor website.
Sure.
Except in one manner. They're not skirting anything. Probably one percent of those people actually look at that. Uh, you know, maybe more, but the people that you're talking about skirting. Uh, you know, maybe more, but the people that you're talking about skirting are the ones that don't get a building permit. Okay, and don't get a zoning permit. And then, you know, they add to their house and that doesn't get picked up through process. You know, that is statutory. The way it works is that when that building permit goes to the Lake County Auditor. Makes a Lake County Building Department, they send that information over to the auditor's office. And it's up to them to update. Now, if somebody or people are aware of people who haven't got a permit. Then they can follow, they can call us because they're in violation of our law. Okay, I mean, if it meets our alteration standard, any, a zoning permit. Or if it's just a, an interior bathroom that they're upgrading with a super shower and other type of thing. You know, that they need a permit for, uh, and people see a truck there, you know. Uh, I, they can always call the city on that particular situation if they're sold. Plumbing permit or building permit, or you could just call the building. They have a job to do and I don't think we should be getting in their way. Now, whether or not they do that job well enough, you know. I I think that people could have different ideas. It's really in terms of keeping track of. I don't know how many individual houses are in Lake County College, forty thousand individual houses. Like kind of keeping track of forty thousand individual locations. Uh, on a year-by-year basis, you know, may be overwhelming, you know, in terms of the data collection that they have to do. That's their job. That's my.
Any other questions for the administration?
And one other. Sometimes I think, hey, thank. I didn't discuss my opinion, Mayor, you know, he didn't. Uh, I just thought we were getting out in risky territory, you know, if we could prosecute people. Oh, that we really don't have any part of, which is them telling us what's inside of their house. And then also people have all kinds of privacy concerns too. You know, why does, why does the city want to know how many bathrooms I have? Are they a plan of listening to? I mean, people don't trust government a lot of times because sometimes government goes too far. Okay, where people perceive that governments don't go too far. And I thought that people could perceive that we were going outside of our limits.
But I will say that the auditor during the appraisals sends out a notice to every household. Asking you to check, to confirm the information on there is correct and whether there's been any changes. Unfortunately, a lot of people just ignore that notification. So there really is no mechanism for us to ensure that. Property taxes are levied properly.
Maybe we get a different auditor. I mean, I I'm not saying anything bad about this. But maybe they have to do their job. I mean, that's, you know, if we know of something, if you know, seems like. You probably know about three or four houses, it sounds like, I mean.
I've seen plenty of them because I look at the real estate listings and go, okay, this doesn't match what the auditor site says.
We can then send that to the auditor's office. I think that we would be better off to start that. And to see if they actually do follow up. And if they don't, I think that we have every right to ask them why they're not following up on this kind of thing.
Is is that a role within the administration to look up when some, when we have somebody's house being sold? We have point of sale inspection being done to look on Realtor dot com and see, how was this listed? And update, or is that for members of council to do just as they have time?
I've never. I'm not aware of other cities knowing that. I mean, I think that. I mean, I do think that there's a lot of value, you know, to having people leave taxes. And it's fair and that people be treated equally, you know, from house to house. Values and things, you know, so. If council would want to, you know, appropriate some money to have. Some part-time person, you know, form that role, you know, or some other thing, or if the administration has enough time. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that. You know. You know, Mayor, we would like, you know, from, you know, a trial basis, we would like. You know, if somebody at the administrative level, Chuck, uh, to take, to, you know, track what's going on in terms of the sales. Uh, take a look at what the Realtor dot com said and if it varies, we'd like, we, you know, you know, send the information, see how that. And I think that's well within our.
Mayor, we'd like you to, I would like you to consider discussing with your administration. Whether there's a mechanism to do that. Because I do want to see that we are taxing people fairly and equitably. Because I know there are people who get very upset over their appraisals and go, well, why is this one so much less than mine is? When they have X number of bathrooms more than I do and da, 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 you know.
Well, you know, the people who really get banged up and so are the people who buy a house. You know, uh, during the early part reappraisal. And they pay three hundred thousand dollars for houses on the street that are two hundred thousand dollars and that house was listed for two hundred thousand. First thing that happens the next year is that house goes up to three hundred thousand dollars and those people. Know are now paying a significant amount more than the other people on the street. So it's a man that, I mean, with all due respect to the, to the auditor, right? It's a man that got, you know, what they do in terms of keeping track of all that, but there are unfair. There's a number of unfair things that happen in that process.
That's why any opportunity we can have to make it more fair to the residents. I would like to see that happen because I have. One person I know who lives on Manor, her appraisal went up sixty-two percent. I mean, that's a huge jump. And yet, the property next door to it, which is larger, has the same number of bedrooms, same number of bathrooms, was appraised for less than hers. It, and and, you know, so.
She just bought it?
Oh, no, she had it for years. Yeah, this is the new appraisal, yeah.
Sometimes it's just no rhyme or reason. I mean, there is that process that. And they do an administrative process where you can go and you don't need a formal appraisal. And I think that they try to be fair. Now, we have an expert here. Okay, right here in this audience that was involved in that process. And, uh, he can tell you whether or not the process is fair, but, but when you go through the formal process. Where you have to file and have certain proof, uh, by March thirty-first. Uh, the people who make those decisions are all honest, hardworking people. Who are just trying to do the best they can under difficult circumstances. Can I call my expert witness and see what he has to say?
Sure, you go right ahead.
There is a email address. Through the auditor's office where you, you did send your complaints in it, we, you know, tell them this is a direct question. I mean, there's a big history on. On, uh. First of all, you're talking about somebody's passing, right? Your home is your castle. And. People hate. Pride in it. And. This is what you're working. And when somebody makes a complaint about their owner, about their ground, you. They do take it personally. I don't think the city wants to take that on. Uh, I said to a lot of hearings and frankly, I had an nervous breakdown. I didn't have any problems with dealing with people like. Mr. Lyons and people that hired attorneys that came in. Um. Generally with commercial properties and that kind of stuff. But. Individual people, no matter how you try and explain the system to them. And try and explain to them how we arrived at that value, they don't want to hear it. Their house is not as nice as their neighbor's house. Um. And that's it. I mean, they're, they know, you know, where every flaw is in your house. And. Bottom line is the auditor tries to put value on the house. Based on what. You, they think you could sell it for. Now, tell me, you're paying taxes on something that may never happen. And still you're paying taxes. If the whole system isn't fair. And I don't know how to make it more fair. I. Beat my head against the wall because. Guys would come in. With a signed affidavit. Saying that they sold their property for X amount of dollars and they purchased this property for X amount of dollars. When money went under the table and they didn't pay it. They didn't do that. I mean, I had a guy. I don't want to call that, but what I'm saying is nobody wants to prosecute them at the county level. I asked for a sign saying if you, if you filed a paperwork. And, and you took an oath when you filed that paperwork and you knowingly put false information on there, you'll be prosecuted. And they told me that I should go prosecute personally, if that's the way I felt. So I know where you're coming from, but. I know how people feel about their house and you don't want to get into that.
But that's why the opportunity is when they're actually selling the house. Because it's going to the next person.
Well, the next person's the person that ends up paying the tax.
Right.
It's your tax.
But they're being taxed correctly.
You're being taxed, you're always taxed a year behind.
Right.
I'll give you the worst example I ever saw. There was a lady that lived. On Deborah's ride. In there. She got in a bidding war for a house. She paid too much for the house. It closed on December. End of December. Okay, at that time. The mentor's school board used to file order revisions on the sale of the property, asking the auditor to raise that value. To the sale price. They, they. No longer do that. And that would affect, run around the lake.
Well, they took that, the state legislature passed a law taking that power.
From the school board?
The school board.
What did they do that Riverside was still filing?
Three or four years.
Okay, that's that. So this person bought this house. For three hundred thousand dollars and it was valued by the auditor somewhere around two hundred and twenty thousand. And that's what the previous owner was paying taxes on. In the closing. The taxes. Do were the taxes based on the value of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So now this woman gets this house at the end of the year and she gets a tax bill in January. For the previous year, which. Only gets.
One month.
One month. She gets one month from the previous owner and that month isn't based on three hundred thousand. That one's based on two hundred and twenty thousand and she has to pay.
So, well, there are twelve lots of chicken, yeah. In terms of the tax preparation.
Right. She owes that, she owes for the, she owes for the full year. Behind. But she only got paid for the two twenty, not the three hundred, so from, in the, in the sale. So I, all the, the attorneys that, um. Mentor's school was doing at the diner nights of the. What are you drawing? And he said, well, where do you want me to draw the line? You want me to make the, what, you want me to make it February? I mean, you want me, where do I draw the line? The line says. You had value in this, they bought it for that, that's, we have to raise it for that value. So.
Speaking of what these times about. Under asset planning. We'd be catching people. Okay, who are already going to be paying their credit note debt. Because as soon as that sale goes down, if somebody, you know. Uh, people are going to pay in this day and age, must achieve, you know, what the property is worth. So if, uh, there's actually two bathrooms that there hasn't been one, they're going to be paying their two bathrooms. So if the next bathroom is worth twenty-five thousand dollars, you're speaking in terms of the value of the house. That house instead of selling two hundred thousand for a one bedroom will now sell for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And it's going to be taxed at that rate.
No.
Yeah.
No, the house next door to me sold for two hundred and ninety thousand dollars at its last sale.
When was that?
Last year.
Okay.
Within the last year. It is now being appraised for this next time. The current estimated appraisal is two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Which is thirty thousand less than my house. And it has two and a half bathrooms.
Somebody ought to ask the auditor.
So the sale price doesn't seem to have an impact.
It does everywhere I.
Not in any of Menor on the Lake because I have been looking and it has not.
Then there's, I can't think of one way, the way that the, the auditor's office, Eric, they're supposed to appraise property. Okay, it's the sales price on an arm's length, turns out. Okay, and if you don't have, I mean, the most recent price is what they're supposed to use. And if they don't use that because it's not a recent one, then they do the value from the neighbor, but by trying to cherish it, you know, based on their record. So.
And that's not how they listed on their, on the thing, on the pamphlet that we all got in the mail. It says. Comparable sales, it says, there's a list of things that they use. Their most recent sale price wasn't one of them.
Most recent sale price, that's what the law is. Don't have the cap or inversion term to what we like to go, but that's the way that, I mean, I've seen that happen, you know, a lot.
So it does not catch up because of that. Yeah.
Now, sort of, uh, the auditor is always trying to keep the values down artificially. So that people thought that they were paying less taxes. That really wasn't the case. The values really only matter in relation to what your house is worth. You know, against the, you know, the whole, the taxes.
Sure.
So, for example, on this real, uh, real recent reappraisal, which was the big one, the six-year thing, where they hire a big company. If everybody's value, uh, in Menor on the Lake went up thirty percent in your house, which I hope, okay, went up twenty-five percent. You should see a small decrease. Okay, if your house they bought up thirty-five percent versus thirty percent in the city, then you might have, you know, you could pay a little bit of extra tax. That's the way it's supposed to work.
Forty-five percent, thirty percent in my neighborhood, so.
I, I didn't check yours first. I, I will be concerned if I was the mortgage company. Or the buyer. Giving a mortgage at two ninety, knowing that the comparables were at like a two twenty range.
Yeah, but they do, they don't care what the auditor has it listed as.
Oh, no, they don't. But if, if I'm the mortgage company. I'm saying to the buyer, you're crazy if you're paying tax amount of dollars when. Comparables in the neighborhood are seventy thousand dollars less.
Yep.
You need to go back to the.
But that's not what the comparables really are. That's a comparable based on what the auditor might have as it being a one-bedroom or a one and a half bathroom house. That would be correct, but the real estate listing is two and a half bathroom house. So it's going to be compared to other two and a half ba- bathroom houses. So it's going to get a mortgage for the sale price without a problem, but the auditor will still be incorrect.
So if, uh. Going back to the home that's the castle. Council has such an ordinance that makes a. Mandatory application that listed somebody built something out falsely. How do we prove? The only way we can prove it, we need to go get a certain order, you know, and say.
That's why I'm perfectly fine with. Someone in the administration going, all right, we're so, that we have a point of sale inspection for this, this is what the real estate list, send that to the auditor and let them deal with it. Like, I, I'm not saying we need to, you know, have a form that says you, you confirm all this.
Well, I, I, I think that real estate listing stuff that, that's out there is pretty accurate. People want to show off their house to their next. So I think that that's good information to give to the auditors. I'm surprised that the auditors. Have, you know, now that we brought this up, haven't been using that tech, you know, technique themselves, you know, to do a check. You know, on maybe every ten houses sold to see what kind of a level of clients there is out there so they can decide if they want to expand that. I think it, it makes. I think it it makes a lot of sense.
Does. Okay, now that we've beaten that to death.
There, but we had an expert witness now. He wasn't prepared for his testimony. It's up to the.
Sure.
What the auditor does is they take your house, when if you would look at your property information card. They are basing that on the terrace and lots of less appreciation, plus the land. To try and come up with fair market value. They try and put everything in a neighborhood. And they, they don't want to compare your house to in in Menor on the Lake, so let's do a conglue in Menor on the Lake. They don't want to compare a house, uh, you know, up on Lake Shore to a house down on Salida. Okay, obviously the great, the great values and the house on Salida is the same. But not every house was built in the same year, not every house was built to the same. Quality grade, okay, so when they're originally built, whenever they were built, somebody from the auditors went out there. And they tried to put a quality factor on that house. And this is where. Things get subjective instead of objective, because now somebody has to say that this house was built better than that house. So it gives a different kind of grade, so when they're looking at the cost ladder on the house. What they used to compare it to was a, where they started was a. Fourteen hundred square foot house. Little basement, fourteen hundred square foot house with no basement. And one bed. And that was the standard that everything is comparing us to that ranch, so. When you, they take your house and they started adding the components to your house and comparing it to that, that's the quality grade. And then your, then your, like, thinks your house is the same builder, built your house. And. Built your house just like your neighbors, used this, you know, like Ryan Holmes. Throwing up almost everything the same, where you can pick out a better package, but. Basically, everything is is builders grade, then your two houses should come out the same. But I have seen people go into the field. I had one builder company and say, I built two houses and actually these houses happened to be both on. In Menor on the Lake. He says, I built two houses, one house. I sold and one house. I kept and I rent, I'm renting it. And he said, both houses are identical and you have a higher value on the house. If I'm renting, then the house that I sold, how is that possible? And I went and looked at the work that the person who did this. And I have no reason why she did it, she gave one a higher grade than she gave the other. And that grade does not fall away. There, it's one thing, you're going to make a complaint, you know, whether they won't change that quality grade, I don't understand why. Maybe the current auditor will do that, but that grade stays with that house the rest of its time. So on the three year basis. If there is an appraisal of the three years, they take all the sales in the neighborhood. And they adjust every house in your neighborhood by the same. Percentage rate. And if, if your house, and they don't look at your house. They have a triangle, they don't look at your house at all. If we have something wrong. The auditor has something wrong with your house, it's up to you to say, hey, you gave me a finished basement, I don't have a finished basement, you gave me a. A second story and I've got a ranch. And mistakes have right about somebody else puts it in the computer, they can't read the writing, they guess. On this second annual appraisal, they hired people to come in and look at every single property and. I don't want to go into mistakes because the appraisal company would come in and hire people right off the street. And they're no minimal training and they go out. They were putting up. Whether again, it comes down to. Are we gathering your house directly? At that time. So when they go in there, that cost ladder, that was talking about. They have to adjust now. Cost, materials, they have to go in there and they have to adjust all their cables. And so whatever. I mean, an extra patent might be a lot to somebody that's buying a house. It really doesn't add that much to your cost factor and that's where the the replacement cost. Model doesn't work as well as sales model.
It adds thirty thousand to your appraisal, I can promise you that. It adds thirty thousand dollars to your appraisal, a half bathroom to a full bathroom.
Not that it does not add that to the cost layer.
But the final appraisal is thirty thousand dollars, because there's a number of four level, four floor split level houses in my neighborhood. Identical to mine, mine's two bedroom, and the difference in the appraisal values for the ones that are one and a half bath is thirty thousand dollars compared to mine. And the others that are two bathroom, so.
There's gotta be something else trying to.
No, they're all identical, they are exactly the same houses, all Ryan Holmes, all build exactly the same. The only difference is one and a half versus two bathrooms, same square footage, everything.
The auditor was only using seven hundred thousand in fixed rate. That's all it was going into the cost ladder. And then that seven hundred dollars was multiplied by. The quality grade of your house and then reduced by. The age of the house, you know, the deteriorator of what. There's absolutely no way of that one. Did that cost matters thirty thousand dollars, you need to ask somebody out there to explain that to us.
Okay.
It doesn't work that way.
I'll let you know Friday.
You're going for an informal hearing?
Yes, my house is uh, sixty two thousand or the last evaluation. And then four similar stuff across the street, lower than mine.
What they're looking for is you could bring in sales of homes similar to yours that. And you don't have to stay in the fine to your neighborhood, if you're going in there and then inform the hearing. But ask them to explain that cost ladder to you.
Well, three, six ten year, the average cost per split in valuation was one thirty, mine was at one thirty four. Mine's being valued at one ninety now, but the other four splits identical are about one sixty.
And.
That's thirty thousand.
And they're in your neighborhood.
Across the street.
Yeah, they're, they're, it doesn't make sense. These are the lives the same.
Pretty much.
The thirst could go on, you said it wasn't worth it. That I had for, my record record. Back in the day. You, if you would bring in what the houses across the street would have been shown, exactly the same appearance, they would say, well. We can't use that, it'd be good at the time of the appraisal. I mean, they wouldn't see their own numbers, you know, to show that.
I'm hoping my appraisal.
No, I'm hoping that, you know, now that may have changed, but that's the way it used to be. Because people would compare it across the street, saying the house is even closer, they wouldn't listen to that.
Alright.
The only thing that's not listed on the property record card, if you take your property record card, it's online. Take your neighbor's property record card, it's online. The only thing that's not listed on there is the subjective part, which is the quality grade. Other than that, if those houses are identical, everything should show identical on there, there shouldn't be any difference.
Alright, let's move on. Thank you guys for the discussion here. Um, any other questions for the administration department heads? Didn't think so. Alright, board committee commission reports, Parks and Recreation.
The Parks and Rec Board met on Thursday, July twenty fifth between six thirty and eight thirty P M. In attendance were board members Pachatsko, Stefinski, Kozlowski, Torey and Paul. Mayor Eva and Kenny Ice were also present, as was council president Johnson and several members of the public, including three members of the mayor's citizens advisory committee. The second commemorative centennial T-shirt pre-order sale ended on August sixth. At the time of the last full meeting on uh, July twenty fifth, only twenty shirts had been ordered with twelve days still remaining in the campaign. Uh, therefore, a backup plan uh, for Parks and Rec to purchase the balance of shirts and then sell them at upcoming events was agreed upon. The allocation not to exceed a maximum of four hundred and thirty dollars plus tax was voted upon and passed four to one. However, by close of business day on the August sixth order of deadline, fifty seven shirts had sold. Therefore, only six additional shirts needed to be purchased using Parks and Rec funds. Uh, that were previously appropriated for items such as this for an amount totaling only sixty dollars because they were purchased during the Ohio tax holiday. Anyone who ordered shirts and selected bulk shipping, they picked them up at City Hall during the Saturday, August thirty one event. That event is the one hundredth anniversary family celebration, it will be this Saturday, August thirty one, here at City Hall Park from noon to four P M. The event will feature centennial and lakefront themed activities such as nautical bingo, a bubble station, make sailboat. Sidewalk chalk coloring, shell painting to fill in a large one hundred outline on the City Hall lawn. Creation of items to place in a time capsule we purchased to bury on City Hall property. Uh, a centennial selfie backdrop, play kickball with the mayor, uh, and afternoon refreshments. Following a review of the planned activities and supplies needed for the event, a budget of twelve hundred dollars was authorized from the twenty twenty four appropriations by unanimous vote. Bottled water is being donated by Johnny Eagle. Volunteers are needed to help staff various activity stations throughout the day, and we anticipate needing at least seven to ten volunteers throughout the entire four hours. Please consider helping out, even if you cannot stay the entire four hours, it will at least give someone else a break. The Fall Fest this year will be the following, then Saturday, September seventh at City Hall Park from two to eight P M. Volunteers will be needed to help with shifts for that and an email has already gone out from City Hall for that, so um, please respond. If you were able to help out at various stations. The October Centennial event that will be Saturday, October nineteenth, at the Menor Harbor Yacht Club will be an evening adult dinner event. Um, attendance will likely be capped around one hundred and forty. Sponsors are being sought to help to frame costs and reduce attendee ticket prices. A centennial themed table centerpiece contest is in the works and individuals or neighborhoods are encouraged to enter, details are on the city website for that. Board members have also canvassed all local businesses in the last three weeks to promote celebration of the centennial by inviting them to upcoming events. And asking them to consider offering themed discounts or offers to their customers, which the city can help advertise, we have thus far received a single response. Under new business, uh, the mayor and Jeff Schick briefed members of the board on the Lake Overlook Beach Park Revetment Plan, providing. Uh, the history and current state of project planning. The city engineer has been tasked with creating an alternative project plan that encompasses the priorities of revetment, beach protection and water access. The issue is how best to go about that. Hosting a bidders conference was suggested, which would invite experts in various aspects of shore management and construction to provide insight. And ideas on what's needed and what's possible that could then be incorporated into the final plan. And in terms of next meetings, a series of weekly sessions have been planned to organize and assign tasks for upcoming events. A group of three board members has met nearly every Sunday at nine A M since July twenty eighth. Coming up next, there will be centerpiece workshops for Monday, September nine and Monday, September sixteen at five thirty in this room. And the next regular board meeting will be scheduled as uh, usual on Thursday, August twenty nine at six thirty P M. That concludes my report.
Good, Community Development Committee.
Community Development met August twelfth to the twenty fourth, uh, started at six P M. Summary of the meeting was started by discussion on moving forward for entertaining individual companies. Uh, to just create an R F P, R F P, having two parent companies inquiring about services and provide material from Blackbird as potential interested webpage designer. Discussion shifted between. Between a proposal for a former interested company to an actual detailed in-depth actual bid from another city webpage bidding process. The committee stands to urgency and completion of a document and continue to move forward to simplify to meet our city requirements for an R F P. Meeting adjourned at six thirty.
Good, Ordinance Committee.
Ordinance Committee met on August twelfth at six thirty, uh, for the purpose of reviewing multiple ongoing items. In attendance were the committee chair as well as committee members Bittner and Gray. Attended also by council president Johnson and members of the public Stan Kowalski and Paul Morris. In terms of the short term rental regulation ordinances, the final adapted legislation has been approved by the committee. However, before sending it back to council, the committee did wish to confirm. Uh, about the process of grandfathering under the zoning code and how this may affect the city's ability to enforce those regulations or any changes we make to them in the future. And we have some of those answers back and we do need to discuss them. The final lodging tax legislation language was also approved of by the committee, but will wait to accompany the main regulations back to council. Uh, the committee's proposed language for restructuring of our street parking ordinances, which was initially undertaken to support the expected short term rental regulations. Has been discovered to be incongruous with the current penalties for parking violations, which are listed in a completely separate ordinance, four fifty two nine nine. This was an oversight and was overlooked during the writing process, and so will now be reexamined so that all language is consistent with intent. Our continued work on the noise ordinances, again, initially undertaken to support the short term rental regulations. Resulted in agreement on a new residential noise section addition to our current chapter six forty eight piece disturbances. However, the discussion is now centered on the most suitable penalty structure for violations, given the variety of penalties now levied for violations found under the same chapter. Therefore, we intend to consult with law enforcement and our law director, um, and then discuss further what will be needed. In terms of the feral cat and related animal ordinances. The committee makes the following recommendations to council regarding feral cat population management. Number one, current ordinances on feral cat colony management are sufficient and outline the critical elements needed for colony control. Therefore, no specific alteration of these ordinances is required at this time. Number two, our principal recommendation is for improved enforcement of the ordinances as written. Particularly with respect to coordination and regular contact with the animal welfare organization or organizations involved. And oversight of the trap near to return efforts. Number three, council should ask the administration to provide a public feral cat report monthly. This would show any progress being made and generate data to guide ongoing control efforts. Number four, council should support any effort the administration makes. Towards setting up a meeting with the animal welfare organizations and the public for education on their respective roles in feral cat population management. Number five, council should consider appropriating a fund for reimbursement of residents who trap feral cats and get them to clinics for T N R services. And finally, council should urge the administration to appoint a specific individual or point person. Whose responsibility it is to administer and oversee colony control efforts, interface with the public and our partner, animal welfare organizations. Review monthly data and survey the city regularly. Consult with other municipalities and organizations such as the health department to discover best practices. And why certain measures are successful in one place but not in another, and distribute the funds provided for T N R reimbursement. And finally, the committee reviewed and agreed with language for an ordinance, amending ordinance twenty twenty four dash O dash from six. Which codifies the administrative policy on retire or rehire. And simultaneously corrects the numeration error regarding two fifty point two three that was discovered during this review. We recommend council remove from consideration twenty twenty four dash R dash twenty five. The original proposed policy that was sent to this committee for review. And accept instead the ordinance, amending ordinance twenty twenty four dash O dash O six for discussion and passage. Our meeting was adjourned at seven fifty six P M and that could retire for.
Okay, so you, zoning and service were both canceled for the food distribution finance committee.
Uh, good evening. Finance committee met on six fifteen on eight nineteen twenty twenty four, in attendance was Judy Wong, uh, president Matt Johnson. Uh, summary of the committee meeting was. The committee reviewed the history of the city employee longevity compensation and the reason provided for a weakened statement. Along with the current proposal finance data provided by administration. The committee noted that this plan is essentially a guaranteed annual pay raise for an increase on top of a base salary increase. That city employees currently enjoy each miserable year. It was felt that employees are better encouraged to start and stay by budget for higher base pay. And that bonuses are just that, a bonus, not guaranteed. In all cases, subject to reduced availability amount and even elimination. To the city suffer budgetary distress, this committee feels the council should support instead. A compensation system. With suitable base pay that further rewards employees for achieving strong performances matrix based on objective periodic evaluations. Therefore, we recommend that the city withdraw the proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four oh dash fifteen. For consideration. Meeting adjourned at seven P M.
Okay, were there the boards, committee, or commissions that met? I don't have listed here tonight. Hearing none. We'll move on to open to the public to speak. If you'd like to speak, please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the record.
Scott Wilhamp, seven five seven three, Slatter Road. I just want to say, again, I've spent a lot of nice time on Tuesday, August thirteenth, the city. I had a chance to be here at least for the food distribution, the evening, and there was genuine gratitude from hundreds of people. Came through those lines, people who had tears running down their face. I personally contacted the news herald and all major news channels the night before the event, because again, this was put together rather quickly. Thanks again to Miss Thompson, Miss Wong, really making huge efforts about the city fire, but I'm usually hoping to talk about one of the news stations. But. After the fact, maybe just even word of mouth, I took pictures and I showed them to people who were into friends. And people were just amazed at what this city was able to pull together in a short period of time for this community. People were. Many times, like, I wish I lived in a city like Menor Lake. It made me very proud to be a citizen of the city. Watching everybody come together on that day was huge. And there was genuine gratitude, a lot, really in the city. So I just want to give, you know, thank the. Council members who led the charge. President Johnson, Mr. Gray, Mr. Bittner, Mayor Eva, who were in the trucks, in the trenches, handing out things. To the principal of Menor Lake High School, who helped recruit twenty high school students who came. And to all the other members of the community, the officers, the police department, and the fire department, and some other members. Members of the administration that put together all of the trucks, the distribution, all the work. It was a magnificent effort, and the city should be really proud of the effort that happened.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close this portion and open the public. Legislation for council, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-five, if you could please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-five, third reading. Referred to ordinance committee, a resolution approving a retire, rehire policy for eligible city employees.
Okay, this has come out of committee now with the recommendation to withdraw it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion to withdraw the resolution?
Motion so made.
Motion made by Ms. Wong is her second. Seconded by Mr. Gray. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-five is withdrawn. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-seven, if you could please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-seven. A resolution authorizing the administrative director to sell surplus city property by way of internet auction and declaring an emergency.
This is an annual repeat, so is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend.
Well, it's a lot of people at the same time. Mrs. Thompson, seconded by.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder, okay. Roll call on the suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mr. Gray for passage. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-eight, if you could please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash R dash twenty-eight. A resolution authorizing and directing the administrative director. To file a nature works grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources application. And if approved, to accept the nature works grant and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for us to try and take money from government?
So made.
Motion made by Mr. Bittner, seconded by Ms. Wong. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Motion for passage.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Bittner. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Done, R dash twenty-nine, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash fifteen, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash fifteen, second reading referred to finance committee. An ordinance amending, an ordinance amending ordinance. Two five zero point fourteen. Longevity compensation and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this was referred to the finance committee. It is now coming out of the finance committee, is that correct? And what was the recommendation from the finance committee? To withdraw this. Is there a motion to withdraw this? Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Ms. Wong to withdraw this ordinance. Or motion to suspend the rule, sorry. Huh?
Are we talking with broad?
Withdraw, just take it off. We don't have to vote it up or down, we can just withdraw it if we want to. Well, you don't have to have a vote on something, because we can bring it back if we wanted to. If later we decide we're going to rehab this discussion, we're going to bring it back, we can put it back.
So if we withdraw it.
It stays withdrawn. It's neither voted up or down.
Procedure, either. Could it become policy or procedure then?
No, it can't, because it hasn't been approved. It's an ordinance.
Didn't council ask you to approve? Through the budgetary process?
Well, not just that, but the ordinance itself is written. As it ended in twenty sixteen. So unless we amend the ordinance, which is what this was going to do. If all we do is withdraw it, nothing can happen.
To review, the recommendation from the committee was.
Administration.
The recommendation from the committee was that council should support instead a compensation system with suitable base pay that further rewards employees for achieving strong performance metrics. Based on objective periodic evaluation. Therefore, we recommend the council withdraw the proposed ordinance from consideration.
Question for the law director. We need to suspend the rules to withdraw. So I thought, okay, so we have a suspension by, or a withdrawal by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Ms. Wong. Roll call on the withdrawal of the ordinance.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Or the number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash sixteen, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash sixteen. An ordinance levying liens for expenses incurred for lawn maintenance and or pulver repairs.
Any questions on this verse? Yes.
Discussion. I know one of the houses that are on this list. I'm trying to go down to it.
Davis.
Davis Drives. Five, six, eight, seven. Can we find out when that was cut? I want to ask before we pass this, because the person just bought this house. And I would hate for them to have to pay this. On their taxes. This gentleman bought this house. It's on Davis. Obviously, it needs major repair. He has already worked with Chuck. The house is going to be demolished. And the gentleman will be building like a two hundred thirty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house on this property. So I think we should give this some consideration and not. We should be nice neighbors, you know, you know. See what we can do for that. I mean, I know it's only fifty-five dollars, fifty-six cents, but.
I, I understand the concern, I just. With all that being in one ordinance. Or. I. If you want to approve the rest that leave that.
So that was, yes, that we remove that one for now and we can put it back on.
The rest of those, as you know, if you've been around for years.
It is, right, and it's, it's just happened just to this house, obviously, right?
So is there a motion to remove the Davis Drive?
Motion made.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Lunder to remove the Davis Drive. Fifty-five dollars and whatever cents. From the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Two motions to suspend the rules now.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mrs. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. So now a motion to.
Pass as amended.
Thank you. By Ms. Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Or the number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash seventeen, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash seventeen. An ordinance to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances. As parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances. To provide for the adoption of new matter and the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances. And resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
Did we receive the hard copy? Of those, because I normally like to review them before we pass this, just to see what we, make sure everything is. In line.
Sure, we have.
Yeah. So. I would like to hold off on passing this until I had a chance to actually look at the hard copy and make sure everything is. Correct and. Because I know, I like to peruse that.
I know this happens annually. When? Approximately when in the calendar year does this typically happen now?
This seems late compared to past years.
It is late, I think it's. American publishing.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, normally it's a.
March.
March, April, somewhere, yeah, it's usually. Springish.
Right.
And this, so this seems late. Yeah, I would just like to see the hard copy. For, so we'll move this to second reading. Order number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash eighteen, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh dash eighteen. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh dash oh six. In order to update the retire, rehire regulations for city employees and declaring an emergency.
Let me refer this back to the ordinance committee to respond to the administration's concerns. And now we'll move on to old business. Is there any old business to make?
Okay, that one had a.
I'm boomeranging, thinking a lot. Hey, old business. Hey, new business. Our roof got fixed. Everything's good to go on the roof now?
It's still under.
Not a good time for it.
But.
It's not going to leak on us, is. There's a storm out there. Okay, just check it. Uh, okay, no new business. Then we're back to open the public speak. If you'd like to speak, please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements and settings of meetings. Okay, what all we have here, let's see. August twenty-ninth, six thirty P M., we have Parks and Rec, is that correct?
Yes.
September third, six thirty P M., we have ordinance committee, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
September fourth, at six thirty P M., we have service, followed by the zoning committee immediately after that, is that correct?
Yes.
September ninth, at five thirty P M., we have Parks and Rec, that is a centerpiece. Selection or whatever.
It is a centerpiece construction meeting. It is at five thirty, five thirty to six thirty.
Okay, that's at five thirty. September ninth, at six thirty P M., we have the Community Development Committee, is that correct? We have the next regular agenda meeting, Thursday, September fifth, at six P M. Next regular meeting of council, September tenth, at seven P M. Are there any other meetings that you guys really want to have?
Motion to adjourn. So the envision, just to mention, just so that's announced, when meetings are announced, the envision's during committee meeting is Thursday. September twelfth.
September twelfth, Thursday, September twelfth, is the steering committee meeting for invasion.
Seven P M.
Seven P M.
Yeah.
Alright. There was a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Wong. Roll call on the adjournment, please.
Mrs. Thompson.
Hi.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Mr. Bittner.
Hi.
Ms. Wong.
Hi.
Mr. Lunder.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. This meeting is adjourned.